There, but they can't hear.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December 15th City Council Meeting for the City of Cannon Falls. Could we have roll call, please?
Bringle.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Gesmi.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Althoff.
Here.
Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we start tonight, I got a little presentation. Morris, would you come forward?
It's the cold watch.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh, exactly.
Oh, here, in recognition of your outstanding achievement, the City of Cannon Falls would like to thank you for 10 years of fine and dedicated service to the City Council.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you.
And while I'm down here, I want to introduce our new Public Works Director, Ty Reimers, right here. Welcome aboard.
Hey, Ty.
Hey, Morris, was that printed at your shop?
What?
Was that printed at your shop?
Is that, is that the official certificate suitable for framing? Must be. Yeah.
Okay, could we have approval of the agenda?
Move.
Second.
Motion by Gesmi, a second by Duncan to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. Okay. Consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion on resolution as council business. For you at home and in the audience, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, just and correct claims for the accounting period ending December 11th, 2020. Item B, minute meetings for the December 1, 2020 City Council Meeting. Item C, Resolution 2526, adopting the 2021 tax levy and budget. Item D, approve the purchase of ventilators and disposal of old ventilators for the ambulance department. Item E, Cannon Falls Bomber Dance Team banner request. And item F, Resolution 2528, approving the State of Minnesota Joint Powers Agreements with the city on behalf of its city attorney and police department. Is there anything the council would like to pull down? Anything?
Item C, please.
Item what, Matt?
Item C.
Item C? Okay. Okay, we'll make that item E under council business. The 2021 tax levy and budget. Okay, anybody else? I take a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of item C.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Lundell and a second by Bringle to adopt the consent agenda minus item C. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, on to council business. Item A, the ground block construction water and sewer fee reduction. That's for Cannon Bell Cheese. Neil, you want to take that?
Yeah. Ground Block Construction is the owner of the building that's going to be housing the Cannon Bell's cheese plant. Due to the high costs of construction materials and, and construction in general through this pandemic, they are requesting a reduction in the sewer and water fees associated with the building permit and the hookups for the city. They'll need a four-inch sewer and a two-inch water. The four-inch sewer is $5,600 and the two-inch water is $9,800. That's a total of $15,400. We brought this request to the Finance Committee and they reviewed it and made a recommendation and the consensus was to reduce it from $15,400 down to the minimum fee in our commercial and industrial users department to $11,200, which is $5,600 for each. And that should just about wrap it up with what I've got. $11,200 is the recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Anybody want to make a motion on, to that effect?
I'll make the motion.
Morris?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mattson and a second by Duncan to reduce the water and sewer fee for ground block construction to $11,200 for the water and sewer. Is there any other discussion?
This is fine. I think, seems like we lower these quite a bit, so maybe it'd be worth looking into whether we should just lower our standard fees going forward.
We are.
I, we, that's a good point. We've already been talking about it. We're gonna talk about our fee schedules here in the next,
Okay.
very shortly.
You're right.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, item B, approve the legal services agreement with Hoff Berry. Neil?
We held interviews with four applicants for the city attorney, civil part of the attorney's job. Sarah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna slaughter your name, Sarah Swartz Hoff from Hoff Berry gave a presentation to, for their firm and the council selected her and her firm as the next civil attorney. You'll find in your packets the agreement that they used to have for a contract. So I don't know if Sarah's got anything to add. I see she's on Zoom.
You out there, Sarah?
I am here. I don't have anything specific to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Sarah? I guess not. Well, welcome aboard, Sarah.
Well.
We have to approve her first.
We gotta approve her first, but.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Hoff Berry.
I'll second.
Motion by Duncan, a second by Gesmi to approve the legal services agreement with Hoff Berry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. Now I can say, welcome aboard, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Item C, approve an LES Union Agreement 2021 to 2023. Neil?
Well, the negotiating committee met with LES, which is the Police Officers Union. I think it was only one time, one meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was.
Two meetings?
Remember, first one was.
Okay. The changes to the contract were very minimal. There was a 10 cent per hour for the rotating schedule, which brought it up to 85 cents per hour. The Janus ruling, which has changed by the, I think it was federal change, for the fair share was eliminated, so that language was removed in the contract. And then the wage increase, I see in my memo, I have it, it's not correct, but the wage increase for 2021 is 1% in January and 1% in July. And for 2022, it's the same, and for 2023, it's the same. So 1%, 1%, 1%, 1%, 1%, 1%. I guess I do have it right, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry. So with that approval, that'll, that'll be one done out of the three. And I think we're very, very close on the other two union contracts, so.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by, Gesmi, a second by Mattson to approve the LES Union Contract, 2021 to 2023. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Posed? Carried. Okay, item D is Resolution 2527, approving the LES Healthcare Savings Plan. Neil?
Yeah, along with the contract, the Healthcare Savings Plan Resolution expires at the end of the year. This is just renewing it. There's no other changes brought forth, so it's just part of the contract. You'll see another one when the other contract comes due, so it's just an add-on.
Okay, do we have a motion approving the Healthcare Savings Plan?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2527.
I'll second.
Motion by Duncan and a second by Mattson to approve the Resolution 2527, approving the LES Healthcare Savings Plan. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, item E is the 2021 Tax Levy and Budget. Matt, you pull that down. I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I apologize if there's any delays on the audio here. I'm not gonna make a motion to change anything about this, but I wanted to pull this down to bring up the point. I disagree with how we are treating the police department monetarily. If this was about the economy and our taxes and trying to save our citizens money, looking forward, I can understand that, but if that was the case, we would be looking at departments equally and we would be seeing where we could, where we could trim the fat, where we could save these people money. To see that our police department are facing a 14% payroll cut and losing a full-time employee in the same year that they had lost a officer due to resignation, which we are refilling, but that is time without a full staff and we lost an officer to health reasons. I think this department is already dealing with a blow of being understaffed and I know that some people will say this is just about the money, but I am concerned for the future of our police department and I hope that we reconsider moving forward next year, seeing how this budget affects them and that we keep a close eye on our police department so that we can fix this if we think that this would be a mistake. That's all.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the 2021 Tax Levy and Budget?
Yes, I'll make that a motion to pass that.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion by Bringle and a second by Duncan to adopt Resolution 2526, adopting the 2021 Tax Levy and Budget. Is there any other discussion? Let's do a roll call vote on that. Bringle.
Aye.
Duncan.
Aye.
Gesmi.
Aye.
Lundell.
Aye.
Mattson.
Aye.
Montgomery.
Aye.
Okay, unanimously passes. Okay. Council Committees. Kyle, chamber?
Good evening, council and community. I do have to start out with some sad news. And some of you may have heard this, but Pat Anderson passed away yesterday. Patty was with the chamber for 32 years. And some of the things that she accomplished while she was with them, I mean, she set up visits from President Obama, from Governors Purpich, Carlson, and.
Valenti.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Besides that, the Secuentennial, she took care of that whole event. I mean, the Colville, Colonel Colville's memorial and veterans' memorials. One thing that Patty really enjoyed doing as she was in the chamber was helping people who came in looking for their family history. What she found mostly was that she was related to them somewhere in their back generations. And, and so she did enjoy that. I have had some of those people come in and think I can do the same, but I have to apologize because I'm not from the community. And so I wish Patty's family all the best. You will be in all of our thoughts and prayers. And hopefully she is resting happily. Our events finishing up this week for the Light Up Cannon Falls Adopt a Tree Program. And this is part of the decorating and your own decorating. If you would like those on the tour map, please let the Cannon Falls Chamber know that. Right now, we only have seven. But as I have gone driving around looking for those seven, I am seeing beautiful displays of color. And so people may not be calling in their addresses, but I will mark areas where there's very beautiful decorations going up. Matter of fact, there is one that has music. The lights are synced to Christmas carols on two sides of this gentleman's house. You dial into a radio station, 91.3, and it's fabulous. And so if you know where Barclay is, go out there and have a good time. The Bi-Local Giving Tree. We really thought this would have been a bigger program. We actually only received seven children's names to buy gifts for. Now granted, you know, we purchased two, two packages or two presents for each of them, but I've got at least four or five more people who would like to purchase gifts. And, and so that was, you know, interesting that we don't have needy families that could use some assistance. And so if you're still out there, please call the Chamber of Commerce. Our Holiday Scavenger Hunt. I hope you've all been enjoying it. There are 20 clues. The last one went out today. And on the different clues in Facebook and Instagram, the views are anywhere from 200 to 450. And so I'm waiting to see how many actual full lists with locations come in. And they need to be in by noon on December 18th, and that is this Friday. We do have three prizes. The first person will win $200 in Chamber dollars. The second one will win $100 in Chamber dollars. And then the third will be $50 in Chamber dollars. And we have a full list of merchants in town and in the area that you can use those Chamber dollars at. Please remember, community, that you can purchase Chamber dollars from the, from the Chamber. If you're ordering a large group, please call me so we can talk about it and I can get them printed for you. If it's just a few, I can probably take care of that right away. And then the last thing is the Northfield Area Chamber of Commerce came up with a fundraising event where they are raffling off a 2020 Equinox, Chevy Equinox. And plus, they've got 18 additional prizes. The tickets are $100 and it goes through the 18th. So this Friday. They are $100. There's only 750 tickets for sale. And as of the beginning of this week, only 400 had been sold. So we are selling them here at the Chamber Office in Cannon Falls and that helps to support our Chamber. They are helping support us as we're gonna help them. And so if you're looking for a new car or, you know, these other prizes are soundbars, golf packages, wooden signs, Twins tickets versus the Yankees. So I mean, $100 ticket can get you some really nice prizes. Are there any other questions?
On that Giving Tree thing?
Yeah.
I'm registered at Red Wing Chevrolet, so if anybody.
You are.
Yeah. And in what grade are you in?
Is toys for tats, is that over with now?
Yes, it is. They did pick up the boxes yesterday. However, I know Kathy at Cannon Bell's just let me know that they had more toys dropped off today. So I will give them a call and see if there's any way they can come back and pick these up. And, because it was supposed to go through the 16th, which is tomorrow. So we'll see what we can do about that.
Okay.
Anything else? If you have decorating that you would love for people to see, please call the Chamber. That number is 263-2289. Thank you very much.
Write that down, Bill. Your little tree. He's got a little tree.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, EDA, Laura?
Just a little update. We've had some nibbles on the Cannon Bell site. I've reached out to a few different developers and we've had some calls. Some have been driving down the highway. Some have seen the sign that's in the parking lot and I've had a guy from Russia ask if he could please acquire some real estate in the United States, but I didn't follow up with him. So we have some, you know, some prospective activity on it. It's not just sitting there with no one calling in on it. Thursday, we're gonna have our strategic plan and goal setting for EDA. So that will be our, to, it'll be our full board with our outgoing EDA members and then our two new incomings, so we'll have some crossover. So that will be here in council chambers at 3:30 on Thursday. So, and then we'll, I've asked each of the members to submit some ideas ahead of time so that we don't have to sit and everyone scratch down some ideas on a sheet of paper. They're coming prepared. I'll have some things put together so that we can kind of hit the ground running and make the best use of our time. As far as Blandon goes, my goal was to get every dollar allocated before the end of this year and I have done so. So I actually get to steal a little of Nicole's thunder. Sorry, Nicole, but sometimes you steal ours. So Nicole has a, she came to me with a request for some Chromebooks for the library that can be rented out because obviously with people working at home or not being able to go out and do things, they're, they do have some right now, but she's trying to increase the number of Chromebooks that she has to rent out, so, or to check out. So she's only requesting $1,300 from, $1,360 from the Blandon funds as she has also secured some other grant dollars and then also her time putting into getting them set up once we, once she receives them. And then I spoke with Superintendent Sampson today and he's working on his project plan with some dollars that they've already allocated through the district. So we'll use some of those dollars to match so that we can get some more families provided with some better internet service or service if they didn't have it, as well as some extra hotspots for families because obviously all the students are learning at home right now and parents are still working at home, so it's kind of a strain on their bandwidth or in, a strain on their data usage as well. So anyway, so right down to the penny, that money is allocated for the year. So it took a while, but we got there. So that's, and the last thing that I have to say is just, Christmas is next week and just thinking of some stocking stuffers for any people, friends, family, neighbors, whatever, gift cards from our local businesses would really be helpful. So just a little shout out to all of our, our merchants in town, so that's it.
Okay, thank you. Planning Commission met last night.
Yeah, we met last night, had two items on the agenda. One was a fairly simple administrative item and the other one was a lot split that we approved.
Library Board. Mary Jill or Nicole's out there?
I'm here.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I'm at home, but you know. So what's going on at the library right now? We are, we had to pull back to curbside service because there was a staff exposure to COVID right before Thanksgiving and then I had to close the library just to make sure everything was all clear. But then we had to pull back to an earlier phase of our reopening plan and that's only three people in the building working at a time and physically distanced so that if there's any exposure again, then we won't have to close the library again. And I am currently working at home because I'm recovering from shoulder surgery. So I can't really do anything in the library. But that's just what's going on right now, but I'm really, really happy that we've gotten those grants for the Chromebooks. One of the grants was from Mayo Health System and so I was able to buy five Chromebooks with that and they're, we're currently getting them processed. So my goal is to have them available and ready to check out by the end of the month. And then Laura.
Gotta upgrade our Zoom.
Yeah, okay, I'll go quick.
Not really.
So, and then Laura told me today that Blandon approved the additional funding so that I was able to order five more and then those will be coming later this month. So I think that those five additional Chromebooks will probably be available in early to mid-January, depending on how long it takes us to get them processed. So we got that. I also have got a grant from Goodhue County for something that we're gonna be starting in the spring. That's gonna be a harvest box and it's gonna be like a free little produce library. So we're gonna be putting out a fruit, it's not a fruit stand, but a produce stand and I have a local farm that's going to donate some fresh produce that we can put out and then that's going to, the goal with this is to try to help supplement what the food shelf can't do with fresh produce. And then I would also be very happy for local gardeners to donate their surplus, their overflow gardens for that, too. So we've got that going on. I found out just right before 5 o'clock that we also got a grant to start story walks, put story walks in parks here in town. So Alexa's gonna be working with the Parks Department to get that started pretty soon. And I think that's all of the grants that we've gotten. And as far as circulation, Alexa has created and is creating Storytime kits. So people who really like that physical story time can then check out a kit that is Storytime books and songs and finger. can then check out a kit that is Storytime books and songs and finger plays, and then they can do that with their kids at home and then return it. And she's coming up with like all kinds of Storytime kits for, for people to do. And then, of course, check out our windows because we put lights in them. And now we're done.
Okay, okay, thank you, Nicole. Okay, let's go around. Jeff, you got anything tonight?
Only about 20 minutes worth.
Good.
Just kidding. I've done nothing.
Okay. Neil?
Just a couple items. Want to thank Morris for all his work and all his years of helping out Cannon Falls. It's been a pleasure. I know I've only put in three quarters of a year with you, but it's been fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Been working with Ty already. He's, he's day two, and he's still here, so that's a good thing.
Back after lunch and everything. Wow.
We, we've already discussed working on a capital equipment plan, and we'll be getting going on that throughout the winter here. And, and I know we're, our budget is set for 2021, so we'll be looking at that plan as we enter into 2022 budget.
Okay, thank you. Let's go around the council. Derek, you got anything?
Yeah, just wanted to thank Morris for all the service. It's been a pleasure working with you. Hope you stay involved in some way, shape, or form, whether a committee or coming here to yell at us during public input.
John's already twisted my arm.
Oh, has he?
Yeah. He's going to be on the planning.
Oh, perfect. And yeah, it's been a trying year for the country as a whole, but I feel like we made it through pretty well. We got an adequate city administrator now.
That's what you think. Oh, my God.
I'm kidding. Neil's doing a great job and finally got a Public Works Director, so things are looking good going into next year.
Oh, my gosh.
Morris, you got anything? Well, I just want to thank you all for putting up with me. And as far as Neil goes, you know, this negotiations, like I mentioned last time, you know, breaks and that, you don't get that with him. Well, first of all, then he wasn't there because of his.
Quarantine.
Wife there, that COVID, so. But it's been a pleasure working with everybody. Thank you. Mary Jill?
Just, first of all, Matt, thank you for your thoughtful comments on the budget. I think it always behooves us to look at things, so I absolutely agree that we need to keep our eye on stuff and make sure we're not doing things that are just arbitrary. So I agree with you. Secondly, to kind of piggyback off what Kyle said, oh, God. I'm not the only person in this room who's known Pat for over 50 years. Man. Polka Band, I was her choir director for about 30 years. I mean, it's just crazy, but just one of those people, and I do hope she's resting in peace tonight. That's all.
Bill?
Yeah, first, Morris, again, thank you.
Thanks, Morris.
And you'll be with me on Planning Commission, as John twisted your arm. I don't think most people realize 10 years on a council is a, is a long time. It's a big commitment, and you meant it very well, so I thank you for that. Also, as we won't be meeting again until January, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Neil?
Is it Morris? Morris, is it? Yeah, Morris. Yeah, it's been, expect calls for maybe some of your input. Just because you're off to council doesn't mean you still, could be used for certain things.
Yeah.
Ideas, stuff. Welcome to Ty. You got a, a, a good staff.
You gotta say that. You gotta say that.
And I, I, I wish you, I wish you well. I think you're, I think you're a good fit. I enjoyed working with you during the interview and stuff, so I think you'll work out great. I'm, I am a little bit disappointed that now there's two people from Cannon Bells, and neither one of them has Superman ice cream with them. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. Matt?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Same thing has been said, but thank you, Morris, for all the service that you've had. I know I'll still see you around your shop and school buses and such, so thank you for everything that you still do for this community. You know, we're approaching the end of the year. A lot of times is when people look back and put together lists or accomplishments. I just wanted to say, Neil, you have done a tremendous job here this year. So thank you for everything that you're doing for the community. Also, accomplishment mostly due to Neil is the upgrade of the pool and the refurbishing, and hopefully we will be a little bit closer to normal by spring, and we can be back out and enjoying that and get past COVID. Welcome to Ty. Ty, we met during the interview process. I wish you the absolute best of luck. We will be here for you. Public Works is very important to this community. You will do a fantastic job. Other than that, happy holidays. Stay safe, stay healthy, and wish you the best of 2021. That's it.
Thank you. Just a few things, kind of expand on what Kyle was saying. Shop locally, big item. These merchants need us. Let's see if we can support them. Condolences to the Anderson family. Patty's going to be missed. Morris, great 10 years. Thank you for your service, and I'm glad you're sticking with us, too, on the Planning Commission, so. And welcome, Ty. Yeah, I think you're going to do a good job. Okay, let's get into public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments must be respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. The city council will not take action on any issue raised by the public but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Open the public input. Anybody for public input? Third and final call, public input. Hearing none, we'll close the public input. Before we adjourn, I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Again, Neil, you've done a good job. We appreciate your work, too, and hopefully 2021 will be better than what we've gone through this year.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, with that, I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Steve, second by Duncan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried.